Penn State Regional School Committee meeting for October 17th, 2023. Roll call Wayne.
Here.
Lana.
Here.
Emily.
Here.
Marie.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Chair is President Ashley.
Yes.
Chris. And Deena is Committee of the Link that she expects to be here soon.
Four point one two.
We have a motion.
Susan? Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Subcommittee updates. Finance?
No major updates right now.
Teaching, learning, accountability?
No updates.
Policy? Community laser communication?
Hello. So we actually met last week. Just kind of going over again a sort of more refined calendar rotation of us getting involved, especially with the select boards in each town. And then also just looking to see again with some seats opening up and to try to see again within our own board who might be interested in running or renewing. So we had some conversations about that as well. And I think that's it.
Thank you. School committee goals, we'll begin into that a little bit. Please stop a comment. I don't believe we have anybody signed up.
No, we don't.
Thank you. Superintendent's news and student rep's news.
I, of course, will defer to my colleague, Ms. Katie Lannan. What's new that day?
Hey, there's a lot. Too much going on, especially for student council. We are definitely putting our focus towards homecoming and spirit week because we really want that to be stronger this year because we felt that last year it kind of lacked a little bit. And this year we're actually combining with the middle schoolers and incorporating them with all our dress up days and like fundraisers and stuff. However, they're not doing our typical spirit night with all the games or the homecoming. I think they're having their own separate thing. And then the reason, we normally have a fall dance typically in September, October, and then that just faced way too many issues and time, time planning problems. And then also one other thing that's more just the whole school in general is like our theater program is presenting premium shows because Friday and Saturday and the drama studio, but tickets somehow are already sold out due to like the last week.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. So from the district side of things, quite a few bits of information, just two quick previews, which you'll hear from Mr. Conway tonight in terms of academics and where things are. We've received recently from 2023 AP School Honor Rule recognition, so given us by our board from the AP School Honor Rule. It recognizes schools that have done outstanding work to welcome more students into AP courses and support them on the path to college success. So we just got that recognition. Obviously, it's nice to get that recognition, but I'm thinking we'll probably have a lot more students. So if that's why we got that, my inclination would be we'll keep on getting something like that in consecutive years. Also, you might have seen in the Globe, there's an article about the growth, Pennsaukets, Pennsaukets growth. Mr. Conway again talked about that today, but we've improved by about 100 spots in the state rankings over the last five years, which is important, and that's specifically with literacy. Just a heads up that we did have a power outage in Merrimack. I know if you, if you're on the school committee and you're not getting those FYIs, please see me or text me and I'll send you a link so you can reengage sometimes. If, or you tell me what happens. You change your phone or something happens. I think almost all of you are.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think all of you, I believe almost all of you are signed up, but if you're not, just let me know. Send me a text. I'll send you a text that will get you signed up into it. But that's how I communicate things that happen. If there was a power outage, it was something, the power went out, Merrimack municipal light showed up, they thought they could get the power back on, they did, but they felt like the box was too vulnerable. If that went out, it was going to be out permanently for a long time. Mr. Seymour was there keeping all of us updated and the decision was to keep power out until about 9:30. They got power stored before 9:30. We didn't have any more problems, but that did happen. Also, I know we haven't talked about this, but way back on May 1st, you may recall, there was an event on campus where the middle school and high school had to not educate. Do you recall that event? Everyone had to go outside because of smells?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So still waiting for the report on that. But that aside, there was a big meeting, how the building with a train was involved, installers were involved, the people who do controls, the control system, they were all involved. And it sounds like they've traced down all the possibilities. So it seems like things are very, they're going really well. Train has conceded, there are some things they have to do. There's things from our end that we've been up more on top of, and Mr. Seymour is making sure that scheduled, things that need to be scheduled and done are getting done. But that was a very, it was the first time we've ever had a meeting like that after months and months and months of trying to get that together. So one of the most important pieces of information is Chair and I had this conversation that I went to the three towns and their agreement. So at our next meeting on November 7th, it'll be a, we'll have, we'll do an opening like this, and we're going to have a state of the school where the three town select, where the three select boards will join us. Two major things are going to be covered in that. One is just an overview of how things have been going at Pennsaukett, which I will be the primary presenter on that. And the second thing, there's three adjusts, three changes to the regional agreement that West Newbury has brought up, that other towns, the other towns have looked at, that they want to discuss. School committee members certainly can weigh in on that. It's up to the towns, it's their regional agreement, so they could look at it and we react and respond to things so we can give our two cents on how that might impact. But the three major issues, first one is capital assessment. So anything right now that costs more than $10,000, it becomes a town responsibility. They want to increase that to $20,000. Greg and I have talked to you about that before. That doesn't mean much to us because if it hasn't been costly, then we're just going to go to the towns and ask for more money and the budgets. The second item that's on there is there's some language that requires each school district, that it requires each town to have an elementary. So they want to try to remove the shell and replace it with a "may," so not requiring the towns to have an elementary, but they may have an elementary. The reason being, if two towns wants to merge an elementary school and do an elementary project, they could do that. That one, looking at Suzanne, is way more complicated than I think they may believe to be. Because it sounds simple, yes. If West Newbury and Merrimack wants to merge, yeah, change it from a shell to a "may." The problem being that the state has to approve any changes to the regional agreement and they're going to want to know all sorts of things like, okay, well, who was responsible for all the debt service that was on that other building, whichever one that left? Is it now shared by those two towns or is it just that one town? So it's not as simple as that may be. And the third thing, the third factor is a finance advisory committee, which exists in name in the current regional agreement, but it's not really qualified. That became a bigger issue a year and a half, two years ago. My take is that the town administrators at this point think that what we're doing right now makes a world of sense. We meet every month to go over everything, they're able to share up with their fincoms and their boards of selectmen. So curious to see where that conversation goes. But that will be on November 7th, that would be our next school committee meeting. It will be at the business section. It will be state of the schools and then the regional agreement discussion. The final part I wanted to mention was, oh, two other things, sorry. So Chris was with me yesterday along with Pamshed. We did our first meeting. There was a video that was done about Dice and Dice's replacement. So remember that's a, we're going to have instead of just the one for the entire district, that's primarily here, will be in the school. We did, it was a quick presentation that was done yesterday. For anybody who was interested, there'll be another presentation, that's next Monday for anyone that's interested. Then we'll start the whole contribute process, but I think overall, I think a lot of people are very sad that Dice is gone, but the people, the prospect.
Not yet.
What's that?
Dice isn't gone.
Right, not gone yet. Definitely not gone yet. But the, the prospect of having a Dice in every building across the board has been just everyone's ecstatic about that, particularly at the elementary levels where they don't get to have that opportunity. And, and again, I would say firsthand, it's been remarkable. Like when we watch kids who won't talk to teacher or read, read to Dice or just talk, start talking to Dice. The last thing I was just going to mention is our robotics team was trying to find here, but they went this past weekend, this past Saturday, they were in Tewksbury, was it in Tewksbury? There was a robotics competition, they went there, was kind of trying to find pictures. Yeah, it's like a, it's awesome. Like I, I was talking to a parent, he said, my child got off the bus and she was, I gotta go, duh, 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 because she's in that class. She got off the bus and she was, just couldn't stop talking about, oh my God, I can't wait. And now they're in a competition, is it next, it's coming up soon, isn't it? There's a competition coming up soon, it'll be their first one. So that's a really cool progress. And I know last time we talked about, you know, reach out to the principals if you want to have a, let them walk you through the building. You definitely should do that here in this building. And just walk by that, that space, or every time I walk by, they're always doing something that's, I could not have imagined doing when I was a kid. Like the closest thing I'd come up was wood shop or metal shop to what they're doing. It's, it's pretty amazing. And that is all the news I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Your business.
M.A. Okay, so I'm going to try to bring up the screen again here. Give me one second, but while we're doing that, while, while I'm doing this. So I kind of alluded to it already. You know, we've got the MCAS scores that was made out, that came out public. So we always get these big ones, hey, just let you know, go back, check the data, all that. You might remember from last year, doesn't matter if it was here or the presentation we did for the state of the school, where we showed where Pennsaukett had been and how we were progressing. And even during the pandemic, we were making bigger growth. And part of that was, and it was certainly in the Globe article, like the literacy scores have not gone up significantly. At Pennsaukett, we've not got, we've not gone up significantly in terms of relative, but the growth we've made has been remarkable. So that trend has just continued and you'll see it again today where it's, and it's, I sat down with the principals and we talked to them, so this is predictable. At the elementary level, you have now, we have five consecutive years of a math curriculum. We have four consecutive years of a socialized curriculum. We have three consecutive years of an, or two consecutive years of a literacy curriculum. So all of that is somewhat predictable and it will just continue to get better and more consistent. So what we're looking to see is in the next few years, the increases in this building, particularly at the secondary level, should start to, should start to really be visible. And Mr. Conway has put together, you all have this slide deck. And he has assured me, there are, how many slides, Mr. Conway, is there?
I think I was told seventy, I didn't count, yep.
He, he couldn't count that high. He has assured me, he has assured me that he is, like, he's going to go through. So this slide deck is in the packet, you can click on the link, you can go through, you can look at all the slides. But I'm going to turn over him to let me go into all the detail. If, if you have questions, stop and ask. He knows that I will periodically interrupt. What I will say ahead of time, two, two big takeaways. One, it's, it's pretty cool to see, right? This is, this is what we want. Like when you know in theory if you do X, Y should be an outcome, it's great to see that. Is that happening everywhere? It's happening almost everywhere. Does it mean we're, we're close to where we need to be? No. I know where we should be and we're still going to work to get there. Do we have everything we need in place? We don't. And we still need to work on it, we still need to get there. But the improvements are pretty, pretty significant, it's pretty awesome to see what we believe should happen to that play out. And the second thing is, this isn't done just on mouse, it's not done just because you implement curriculum. Like there's people working, planning every single day in those classrooms, making sure the work's getting done and that the kids are receiving the support that they need. And, and honestly, that's always been the case. It's always been the case. The teachers have been there taking care of the kids, doing what they can for them. And it's just the support that they've been given has, has made their outcomes where it should be. And it's really a much better example of what we're all about and what our teachers are all about. So just a shout out to all the teachers for that work they've been doing. It certainly doesn't happen without all the support that we're giving them, so. Mr. Conway, take it away.
Thank you. This is a very similar slide deck that you've seen in prior years, just to keep information consistent over the years. A few changes here or there, a few additions. Again, we're, we're not, I, I've told Chair Markins, probably about two, three minutes per slide, I think, would be, I'm joking. Probably about, maybe about 10 or 11 slides we'll sit on a little bit and discuss, talk about the rest of it as air. As information, we can certainly go back and refer to them if people have questions. So. And this is actually the first year we have returned to the regular full accountability system since the pandemic had occurred. So back to what it was prior, in 2019 was the last time we had sort of full reporting of all of that. And we put it all in here, we put the AP scores in and everything, and it follows the sequence of accountability discussion, MCAS scores and AP scores. And a reminder, accountability is not just MCAS scores, there's other aspects to it. And certainly even at the high school level, the aspects to it go beyond MCAS scores with a few other components. So we, we can sort of point some of those out. So that full system of accountability, reporting and categorizing the schools, give the MCAS results by district and then by school and then the AP results as well. And then we put action steps and next steps in here too. It's all, and many of these are reflected in the school improvement plans that you've seen. There's a lot of through line planning, I think as Dr. B referred to. This is not, these are not incidental results, these are not incidental outcomes and actions. There's a lot of coordination that occurs and that coordination stems from central office, it stems to the building level, the supports that come in between, and the teachers at the classroom level too, doing a lot of coordinated efforts. So the state accountability system, the full system is in effect, we talked about that. This is something that I think we'll point out, we'll show a lot of things years, years what we've seen, 2017, 2018, 2019, you'll see some scores and numbers from that time period of when we began to make some of the systematic changes that we're talking about. Not just curriculum, this is not about buying a set of books or programming, handing it to teachers. It's about organizing the internal assessments that help align to it. It's about creating school schedules that help us allow us to do it. It's about creating personnel changes that allow us to give more instruction to kids when we need it. All of those things are part of it, along with high quality instructional materials. And when you begin to look at our average percentile rank of our schools, we were in the 43rd percentile in 2013 and we are now up to the 68th percentile.
You, you recall last year we were like 21% or we had this whole, anyways, 21% increase. Well, we added four more percent on there, like it's, and, and we will keep going.
And this graph shows you, or this chart shows you by, by schools. And we use 2019 here because this was, we actually had started some of the work we were doing. We were already in a, moving in a positive direction. But 2019 is the last year we had the full accountability. And then you see the change from in '22 and '23, and you can see the individual schools. I mean, we still had individual schools in the 30th percentile. And that is taking, you know, if you look at, and that's all the like schools, so it's a middle school, it's all the middle schools across the state of Massachusetts, we're in the 39th percentile. One of your schools at the 37th percentile and even the elementary is Baghdal and Page. And you can see now considerably better, much improved. And not that it's a competition, but you can certainly see the change over time. So this is more for information about how the accountability system works. As is this sort of setting targets, the background and information that goes into, we are classified as making, as a district, making substantial progress toward targets, which is, that's probably where we want to be, right? The links are here too, because this will get posted to the website. If you want to see the actual accountability ratings, the MCAS scores are all digital, they're all available to, for families to look at. And this is what a criterion reference thing, these are all the things that come into play. It talks about achievement, growth, and there's some specific things for high school, like graduation rates and all of those types of things. And you get different points along the way for, for doing those things. And we don't really try to game the system here. The bottom line is the, the highest weighting one is achievement and growth. That is where the vast majority of the points come from, as it should, right? So we talked about the categorization of schools as well. So that's a breakout of how, where they fall. And here, here we are as a district, you saw those 2018 numbers shifting to 2023, three of the schools in that substantial progress, two of them actually meeting or exceeding, excuse me, one meeting exceeding and one making moderate progress. So a lot of overall, very good progress here, no one falling into the requiring assistance and intervention. The accountability percentiles, so you saw the broad ones, the overall. We also, a real note here, and this is really important, our students with disabilities, when we compare against other districts and near students with disabilities, our percentiles are vastly, vastly better. With multiples, you know, schools approaching the 80th percentile, some of them page even into almost 90th percentile. So our students with disabilities, while the proficiency rates may not be very high, they're performing considerably better than other districts' students with disabilities. And that's good to know, that what we're doing is having a positive impact and they're trending in the right direction. We made some changes a couple of years ago. You remember, you approved the addition of co-teaching models. And we changed some of those models. You can see the outcomes already paying off. MCAS results, so here we are for the overview. Both English and math data, and as Dr. Barthony talked about, there was an article in the Globe, there was a piece in here that talked a little bit about our ELA growth. Our math achievement and growth is just as impressive. And science results mainly unchanged, a little slight decrease. Our grade three results signal still a need to remain, you know, cautious. We have some things we still need to focus on. I will say for our internal screening data, this is the first year since the pandemic that our kindergarten data is actually now a little bit higher. Every year it was getting lower and lower and lower, and I think we bounced back a little bit this year, so. And this is what we saw across the state happen. I would like to say that generally we reflected this, but we have exceeded what they saw across the state. So here's Pennsaukett's results. Percentile ranks the highest they've ever been. And relative to other schools, our, our students with disabilities doing quite well. Math continues to show a lot higher achievement levels as well. And so a lot of, and the writing performance, which I think was an area we focused on, we noticed last year, all above state averages, and that has not happened in quite some time. So. A good visual here for sure. You can see, this is maybe one of the more telling things, and this was one of the data points, that in 2017, our percentile rank of all grades three through 10 was in the 31st percentile for the entire district. We were 245 out of 357 districts. And we are now, you can see each year, it's like going up 20, 20, 25, 20, now 119th out of 352 into the 67th percentile. And you can see how the graph, we were actually behind the state average and now the gap between us just gets wider and wider.
Just a quick pause. I apologize for the right screen. The left screen, look at that. The right screen's got to give me a headache.
And if we look at math, you see similar gains, if not maybe even more impressive in the changes and improvements. In 2017, we were 267 out of 357. That was in the 25th percentile. It actually dropped to the 24th in 2018. And we are now in the 68th percentile for math achievement, 111th out of 357. And again, you can see that gap get wider and wider and we are well above the state average at this point.
Do you all see the left screen okay when we shut off the right screen?
You know, like the scroll effect, that's not making me feel okay. And this, also, we had shown you some of this information before as well. Compared to other districts, our selected districts, either locally or like us, again, 2017, uh-oh, we're running off both of that. I wonder if that's going to happen.
I guess so.
Well, thank you, Brent. Moving on.
Mary, we have a meeting. What does from the new jury vote?
Four point six. At 615.
Stall, Mr. Chair, you stall.
We're back. There we go.
Way to go.
So you can see we're, we're continuing to climb and to our, you know, compared to selected districts. We still have some work to do there for sure, but trending in the right way, that's English kindergarten, percent proficient, and here's math, climbing up to eighth as well. So but our percent proficient, the highest it's been in many, many years.
Like Mr. Conway said, eighth is not where I want us to be. But the progress is there and it's, will continue.
And then as we begin to look at the actual scores over the years, 19 going all the 23, we're trying to look at some trends. Of course, with COVID, your 20 is missing and, and trends are not necessarily always predictive at that, but we can, you can see over change from the prior year, the math across the board were three percentage points higher from grades three to eight. We had some dips, certainly eighth grade dip down a little bit in comparison. We had a very good year the prior year. But we're, you know, some of that can be curriculum implementation dip as well. And then you can see here for math, certainly gains across the board, except in the middle school a little bit, and we're hoping that our Eureka squares are, is going to help us with that. But overall, again, three, three percentage point gain at the high school, 12, grade 10 going up as well. And then that's just sort of over time, we saw some of those visuals, very similar, that we are past above and growing further apart from where the state averages. These are some of our, our science scores. The biology scores you see published are not necessarily always reflective here. This is actual ninth graders who took biology for the first time. What you see for accountability purposes on the website include kids who have to take it a second or third time. So sometimes those percentages change a little bit, but these are, that's an actual apples for apples comparison. Last year is the first time they took the new test, hence a lower rate, but climbing back up again. And we actually did considerably better than the state average in the biology. You can see this, that's fifth grade science, that is eighth grade science, and then that's us in just the two years. You really can't compare the prior exam. And then as you begin to compare against the state average, and not that we, you know, the state average is our, sort of our bare threshold, but this is the first time in my six years of presenting this data to you, that that column has been all green, that we are above the state average in every grade level across the board. Whether we went up or down ourselves, we are exceeding the state average, which is great to see. And then our, our growth scores are all pretty robust, nothing really, nothing super high, nothing super low, but good to see. And then in math, a lot of grade gains, some really positive movement there. Our high school scores as well, up considerably, and the growth scores up considerably as well. And then science, when you compare to the state average, as I said, we're actually considerably better than where the state was. And then just the quick schools, we won't sit on the schools very much, but one by one, they're here. Baghdal School certainly making improvements over time with good growth, both in English and math. You can see all the numbers there. And then Baghdal provides some areas of strength, focus areas. These are both school based and then in district discussion. You'll see a lot of consistency in what we're working on, both in both advancing the implementation of Witten Wisdom, Eureka Squared, and a lot of supports for students who have continued to need tier destruction. You see Paige School, their growth scores were exceptionally good and continued growth as well. And of note, you know, their sixth grade scores were very, very high. They did quite well. So in fact, I think it was in the 90-something percentile when compared to other six grades across the state. And the Paige School summary there. And then Merrimack, and getting better as well. The growth scores are positively trending and focus areas for them too. A lot of similar work. There's not a lot of great differences between one building and the next. And then our middle school, we did see some dips compared to the year before, but still considerably better in the state. I think the statewide saw a lot of middle school dips last year. That was a big trend that was noticed. If you look at our growth scores, they're kind of exactly where they are. So by large, we're sort of following the trend there across the state. But some specific things to work on in the middle school. And our high school scores as well, much higher than the state they typically are. We typically do much better here. As you can see, those growth scores are very high too, a lot of improvement and some focus areas for the high school. Do you want me to pause there or continue on right through?
Any questions?
It's great progress.
I agree, it is great progress. And just looking at those slides, I just wanna, you know, we discuss a lot of things in here with the budget and different positionings and all that. And how much do you feel, I think there's a lot of things that contribute to this. But I would have to imagine having a stable curriculum would be a solid one. And having curriculum coordinators would also help that. And having the teachers committed to learning so much new curriculum in a short period of time and doing a great job, that would contribute to that. And having the administration that suggests all these things and acts on it would contribute to that. So I just wanna think.
Do you want, you can do the next slide. You got it all then.
I make the one other, one other point. Obviously, everything you said is 100% on point. There's also that other factor of how do you, how do you learn these skill sets early on? And when you are in a bigger class setting, it's more challenging. And even at the middle to upper elementary, even at this level, it's hard if you have huge classrooms. So when you're able to share kids between teachers or target. And that's one of the biggest things we do is look at the data, find out which kids are struggling, which kids are doing well. And then you mix and match them, you swap them out so that kids have interventions and you're getting what they need for a period of time, but then they go back to their regular classrooms. That model with everything you said and keeping the class size reasonable will absolutely garner results if you want.
There's no one single thing. But as a district, we have invested. You have seen the change in the way your budget works. You have invested in curriculum. We have used our own budget to do it. We have used SFR funds to do it. And we have invested in the personnel as well, whether it's adding co-teachers for special ed modeling, I mean, clear gains, to adding curriculum instructional coaches to support that work as well. And then building administration and who can help support the needs and manage and give teachers feedback as well. So it's all those pieces together.
What's working? Thank you.
Continue the AP. As Dr. Bartholomew acknowledged, we had received the AP School Honor Roll for 2023. And so that was good to hear. I don't think we had ever received that before. So it was good to get that acknowledgement. We've done, we are now in our second year partnership with Mass Insight. Something that a lot of the kids involved with AP may not necessarily realize. The teachers do a lot of professional development with them. But we are part of their onsite practice tests and sessions. So we actually host a couple during the year and our kids are eligible to go to a few others that are nearby. So we think that was pretty helpful. They're STEM and ELA focused is the priority for that. But it's been helpful and it's a good organization to give us feedback and discussions around that. These are the overall AP results for us. You know, continuing to sort of provide greater access to students. English results very high, you know, pretty much improved results for at where we need to be. A few spots that we had to focus on last year made gains, which was healthy to see. And we also, we have updated AP texts. So that was, we had some classes operating without a text in AP. We had some teachers using a variety of sources and we definitely invested in curriculum for that.
And I would just point out, we cannot, Mass Insight's been mentioned, you see it there. You cannot underestimate the impact Mass Insight has. In other areas, it's called AP Academy. And in most places, you're not allowed to teach the AP class unless you go through and take this course. And that has not been what we inherited. We inherited when people were teaching the AP class because it was passed on to them. But you need to know, AP is a very different type of course than ours accelerated or something like. So you need to go through and have those trainings. So we, having started with Mass Insight, the continued training that we provided, because we host, we get some benefits there. But that will continue to also have a positive impact on our AP results.
So science results were all very positive gains from prior year in comparison to Massachusetts, doing quite well. We offered two different computer science AP courses. I think we're offering one this year. I think it's gonna go back and forth every year based on enrollment. But some good positive gains, a lot of threes and above certainly for kids. And that's comparison over the years. You see 2023 all the way to the right hand side with the average scores. And then the science AP summary and next steps. So it's following the same trend that we did with the end past results. And some real detailed results as well or summaries. Math, for instance, little mixed results. We had some things took a step forward. We got better with our AP calculus, made a step in the right direction, moving ahead. And then some struggles in some other parts. But nothing that sort of stood out as alarming other than trying to continue to address what might be smaller enrollments due to lower class size. Sort of how do we do that moving ahead? And here's a three-year overview with some similar trends that you see. Some better, some worse. Nothing that jumped out as a continuous trend, we're downward. And then next steps within that as well. And then the history results. You know, not a lot of positive gain here, sort of flatlined a little bit, maybe declined in a few spots. Our enrollment was down a little bit in some of these classes from what we were used to. But you can see over the years, you know, a little bit of decline in some spots and sort of flatten others. This is an area where we're taking more time. History doesn't get to be part of Mass Insight. It's not something that they focus on. So we have to go outside of Mass Insight. So you can see that's maybe something that we need to give more attention to is how we do that. And that's actually maybe a discussion that, well, it is a discussion we're gonna bring back to you at some point in December about some possible adjustments into the way that we sort of sequence some of these classes. And an action plan here. Of note too, I think the US history is actually going to change the way they score several of the things. They've recognized that the way they were scoring them were probably not fair. And they've seen a consistent decline in US history scores. So they're making it, across the country, the college boards making a change in that. Our English results remain very positive. Our lit and comprehension 100%, three and above, and language income 76%. So really good scores for kids in English and really consistently high, whether they're dab or up. They're all very consistently high, which is good to see. But still some continuing work to do, some pretty detailed work. Good news is our global language scores, well, not reflective of a lot of kids. These are certainly better scores and outcomes than we had seen previously. So it's good to see. We had one student participate in Studio Art. And you can see global language as well, much better in comparison. And then some next steps. And then the overall next steps. So just to sort of summarize where we're at. Continued support PD and coaching with Witten Wisdom. We as a, especially around writing, we as a district are actually called upon a lot to support other districts considering this, considering this move. We've hosted site visits. We have one Monday, actually. And we, three of our staff did a webinar today for districts in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Vermont. So they helped facilitate that webinar. And then Great Minds sends them some free materials that they get to use for that. And a focus on language comprehension, grade level texts. Some of those texts are complex for kids, so we're still helping teachers make some of those changes. We certainly, we have our new math with Eureka Square. All signs saying it's really going pretty well with folks. It's been a pretty smooth transition. They were used to Eureka and they liked the changes. Feedback's generally positive. Some better assessment tools for them too, which is helpful. And we're sort of continuing on with some more support around scope and sequence using Mystery Science. And I think that's probably a big step for us to continue to sort of advance that. And then in the middle school, adding more data meetings, particularly around science. We also have data that we can reflect. So we're helping them in seventh and eighth grade with that. Continued work around our special education subgroups and support for that work. And we're using the math and ELA labs, which have shown a lot of positive growth for the kids who participate in them. And that helps close some of those gaps. And then at the high school, you know, a lot of, we continue refining the curriculum maps. The high school will, is completing a self-study for NEAS at the moment. And the fact that we have all of this curriculum outlined, which was not outlined a few years ago, is what is making that process a lot smoother. And their initial visit to us was very positive, a lot of great feedback saying we're well positioned.
Just a reminder, NEAS goes through and they kind of do a, they're outside eyes to look at your organization. They see what you're doing, how you're doing it. And they just collect data and then they sit down and give you an evaluation. In days of yore, it was a nightmare because you would have to commit almost an entire person for the entire duration they were there. And then they come out with this big report. They overhauled that entire process. It's much more, it's a long, they understand that you can't make all these changes at once. So they'll come up with a report and based on that report, we will make adaptations over the course of these 10 years.
I was gonna say it's, yeah. Where are we in the cycle?
We're just in our self-study and I think next year we'll have our site visit. And I think that's the last one.
Any questions?
Despite technical difficulties, 25 minutes, drink's over.
Mary.
Chris with the mobile mic.
Just a question with the implementation, a lot of the partnership with SNHU and the early college credit. Have we seen an impact on, I'm wondering if that's pulling some of the students out of AP, whether that's a good thing or not. Having college students now, I think it kind of won't be a good thing because sometimes you get more credit from math than your AP or whatever. But just wondering if like how detailed we're looking to make sure, you know, we're balancing.
Yeah, it certainly is possible that some kids may choose a dual enrollment course versus an AP. I don't know how often that happens. It's probably fairly small. But you know, if you have a decline of three or four kids from an AP from one year to the next, it might very well be three or four kids who took a dual enrollment course. We are, we're also the recipients of a $25,000 innovative pathways planning grant that we are using this year. It's part of what the engineering robotics work is. It's part of a bigger system we presented about last year. But it includes life science biotech and includes robotics and engineering. So two pathways that we'll come back to more information in sort of early spring. Those two require advanced college courses. So whether they do enrollment or AP courses. And we're planning it as if we have both AP options and dual enrollment options for kids to meet those requirements. In the end, we would say AP and dual enrollment courses are the same. And I think part of our work from our guidance department is having detailed conversations with kids about which of those courses would be the best option. And I'm not saying one is better than the other. Certainly AP would probably be considered more rigorous for students. But it's okay for kids to challenge themselves. We want kids to challenge themselves too. So it could be part of it. I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't blame it, right? It's part of the whole system in general. As you know, we have over 80% of our graduating seniors leave here taking a class that makes them eligible for college credit. So whether that be a dual enrollment or an AP course or early college program with modern Essex. So we provide a lot of different options for kids. And the key is trying to get them the information around making the right choices of what's best for them.
And with that, I will just say my college sophomore was very proud to report that when he got his guidance for next semester, that, you know, she said, what you've done in high school, you could very well be eligible for a semester graduation early. And my next kid who's here now, who's planning, is now so excited about what he was challenged with because that will also help him. So I think, you know, some of the town feedback, I think, has been as well as a little bit of the, you know, well, why do you need that? So again, I think if we continue to gear the curriculum across, you know, all students, all levels, that will, again, benefits the entire program.
You know, I mean, two notes about that is we end up having a lot of kids who, as seniors, take a dual enrollment course, who would never think that they could take a college credit course in high school. And they do and they do very well. And sometimes they surprise themselves. And then we have students who challenge themselves to take one AP course and they push themselves. And they do, even if they don't score a three, the process of taking the class prepares them for more rigorous study. So either one of those options are very appropriate for kids. Whether or not it gets you the college credit or not is maybe a different component, but there's value in both.
There is, as an educator's perspective, that question about the dual enrollment versus the AP class. It's a tough one because for the dual enrollment, you're guaranteed in most places, colleges, certainly state colleges, those credits to be able to transfer. So I know we have students who, I've said to their parents, that's great. Your child can graduate a semester early or a year early because they got all those credits. But do you want your child to give up a year of college? Like, and the response, thankfully, like, which I had not thought of. But the response was, oh, no, 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 no. They're just gonna, their fourth year will be in grad school. That's what they plan on. I said, well, that's brilliant. That is fantastic because you don't want to take that away. Versus with the AP, you are, certainly, we have, there's a lot of kids who challenge themselves, force themselves. And I agree 100%. It's a life experience. You can't be amazing at everything. And so you find your struggles, you see your weaknesses, you know what you're good at. But when you do get to college, you realize, yeah, this isn't as hard because this was much harder. This is more challenging. So you're far more prepared. And it's the, oh, I got a two, my college only accepts a three, or my college only accepts a four or whatever. And sometimes, because you took that AP exam, you get placed in your first year in a math class or something like that. That is, you wish you hadn't submitted that. So there's just those, and it is such a personal decision for that student and their family to make about, what do we want to do and how we want to do it? Obviously, we want them to make that an informed decision in concert with the counselor if they hate to. But it is impressive. I know Mr. Seymour was instrumental in bringing a lot of those opportunities in. I mean, almost all of those outside opportunities, Mr. Seymour brought in. And before it was invoked to bring them in. And, you know, because it's such a great awareness now through the years it's been in place, we're positioning ourselves that we might be able to offer classes entirely with community college teachers eventually coming to us instead of our kids having to go there. And other high schools where there's a large percentage that take them, that's what they do. We're not there yet, but it's something that in the near future is a far-fetched, where one time would have been. Our kids are in good shape.
Thank you. I mean, I'll just add to where you said a little bit like, this is, this has not happened, you know, by magic, right? And it's just progress, right? Not in everybody's life, and you know, kids are more than test scores, but the data is the data. And it reflects, I think, a commitment to a sustained long-term plan backed up by work by educators and you're working with them and working with your kids, and that takes time. And then this year, that was backed up by voters a little bit, right? With financial aid. Financially and, and, you know, that's a, it's a, it's a long-term thing. And I think everyone should feel good about where we're going.
And I would just point out again, Mr. Conway said, Mr. Howie, you heard this, like, you all have supported this as we bring curriculum opportunities to you because you have to improve a lot of this, just with the curriculum we decided upon, as well as when we go to do the budget, these are the things we're trying to focus on. So you've been a big part of endorsing what we're trying to do and that's hugely helpful, hugely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, school committee goals. Also, if it's okay, if we can get in discussion, we don't want to start with a motion. I'm gonna go from there.
Let me check, check the school committee goals. Second.
Any discussion about those? You guys had a chance to take a look, some of the good chances. Wayne, go ahead, Chris.
I had just made a comment about the second bullet, the last line. I'm sure the investment of stakeholders, stakeholders was maximized and just, I think you responded to that. Like, I didn't quite know what that meant.
Yeah, I thought the part that you referenced, and I think I actually deleted the clause that was.
Okay, so that was even more.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So there was a secondary part of that and I just, it was a little, I thought you were right about it. And it just clarified it to just.
Okay.
Clip that part off.
Okay, that's good then.
No further discussion? All those in debate? Motion passes.
Thank you for giving your time.
Item C, school committee member appointed to student council. I didn't have anybody else reach out. Did anybody else want to before? I know Wayne is certainly still interested in continuing that role. If, if nobody else, you know, eager to do it, but we were, we wanted to be open to somebody else rotating in if they were really interested in. But I wanted to give it, throw it out there one more time. And if there's no other interest, I'm very happy to point Wayne to do it again. So that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Item D, Whittier Project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this was recently, I'm trying to say, I can't remember. There was recently an article in the paper that went over Whittier projects. And that's not really been on our radar. And from your perspective, like, it, it doesn't impact Pawtucket School Committee, right? Doesn't impact Pawtucket Regional School District. It definitively impacts the towns that create Pawtucket. So I just wanted to give you an overview first. January 23rd, there will be a vote. It starts, it opens from 11 o'clock to 7 o'clock is when the polls are open. And that is in, is it 11:00 communities? So.
Just like 11:00 AM to 7:00?
11:00 AM to 7:00, to 7:00 PM. So this is statutory, like, you have to have the polls open eight hours. There's one of two ways Whittier could have gone. They could have decided to go around to all their member towns and get a vote from each member town. They would all have to say yes, just like we did. They decided to do a district-wide vote. So it's just simple majority. If the majority say yes, then the voting passes. So probably 11, if 10 towns say no, vote no. But one town, or nine towns say no, two towns say yes, and one of them has behavioral, then another big one, then it's a simple majority, it could pass. So the reality is not, and I know Ms. Lynch, just so you know, is a huge supporter of Pawtucket, was a huge supporter of Pawtucket Building Project. She knew that she was going to be following what we had to do. The cost, there's like a four-year cost. And then I'll actually, I'm gonna find the slide and I'm gonna read to you what the cost would be. It was in the paper. Here. But so the cost of this project, total cost of the project is $446 million. Now they serve 1,300 students. So it's nine to 12, I believe it's 1,300 students is what they serve. So it's a little bit bigger than ours. Our project, just for reference, is 146.3 million. So what Whittier has run into is massively escalated prices when things went out to bid and prevailing wage. So 446 million. The way the cost gets divided up was a question that had come up and it's a great question. And it turns out it's written, how it's written in the regional agreement for Whittier, which was done 50 years ago. And that document, as I understand it, has not been changed much. So when you look at the cost, who has to pay what? That's based on that regional agreement. So for our purposes, there's a four-year initial cost. And then after the four-year, there's a 30-year, a 27-year cost. Those are the two key ones. So for Groveland, this is for an average house. So I don't know more details. Eventually they're gonna have a calculator up. We'll be able to figure out for Groveland, the first four years would be $157. And then the next 27 years would be an additional $338. For Merrimack, it's initially $160 and then $344. And for West Newbury, it's $163 and then $350. So in that article, Salisbury is a good example. Salisbury sends far more students than, than we do. But their initial cost is $80 and then $173. Havel, which would be the other big district, is very similar, 158 and then 341. And a place like Ipswich, this has not been well received, they don't send very many students at all. And it's $126 extra and then $272. So that's the cost. The reality is, in my discussions with more Ms. Lynch, it's not, it's one of those situations where they have a water treatment plant that they have onsite. They have fire suppression. So water treatment plant is failing, has to be addressed immediately. And if the vote doesn't pass, they have to address that. They, they don't have fire suppression. If the vote doesn't pass, they have to address that. And they don't have an access rule. You know, you have to have a double egress. And of course, like their building, which is 15 years old, none of it is to code, modern code, or to IDEA. So it's not, it's not meeting the requirements of this building. So you might recall, if you were back in that, when we were doing the building project long ago, where I started talking about, this is the value of the high school. This is the value of the middle school. If we do a repair, if we do any improvements and it exceeds 30%, we have to meet all codes at that point and we have to make everything fully accessible. And that's the position we're years in. So it ends up being a situation where here's the new project, I'll just kind of give you, here's the new projects. And the MSBA is involved in this. They're in the, so they pay a chunk and I'll tell you what that is in just a second. I'll find the slide. But then there's also, if it doesn't pass, just the water treatment plant, I have that number here.
11.10.
Thank you. You, you got it too. Yeah, it's 11.7 million. And the fire suppression, so the sprinkler suppression is 12.1. So Whittier is worth about $35 million. So that 11.7 is going to get you to the 30%. So as soon as they put that in, everything's triggered. So. So for Whittier, if they decide that they're going to go ahead and it's just going to be, it's a no vote, it doesn't pass, they have to start addressing those issues. So once they trigger that code, the code compliance and the disability accessibility, that total project, they cost it out to $364 million is what it will cost towns. The new building projects, the MSBA will pay 145 million. So the total to the districts would be 301 million. So, you know, there's a slide in the presentation that's 364 million. If you're gonna do it on your own, like, if you're gonna piecemeal it together, which I used to say to people, it's great. We can redo the middle school, we can redo the high school. It will be the exact same setup that we have now and just be a shiny penny. That's what it'll be. It won't, no advantage, no advantage and it'll cost a little bit more. And Whittier seems to be in the exact same situation. I think for, like, the conversations we had with superintendents about this, because we had a meeting with superintendents about this project, the ones that were involved, a, a lot of their town administrators were not aware or didn't understand what the costs were gonna be of this, some claim they didn't know was going to happen. I know, I was on video things a year and a half ago when they were talking about this, trying to select which one. So we knew it was out there. Whittier's had a huge disadvantage. They, they don't have a we are Pawtucket group or any group that's going out there saying, yeah, we need this because they, it's all 11 different communities. So I just wanted to put it on your radar that that January 23rd is the district-wide vote.
Are we still talking about potentially having them visit and maybe need to discuss this in front of our?
That one, I did discuss with town administrators and based on their feedback, I went to Whittier and I said, I don't, that is not a good idea. And based on her experience, that was probably not a good idea because she already has set up with all three towns, individual meetings where it's a smaller setting, they can ask their town-specific questions. And the point was made correctly. I thought it'd be, have people let them, you don't want to entwine really Pawtucket and truly, like, keep Pawtucket as Pawtucket. But I'm happy to, like, I was very happy to learn that, like, all of our town administrators knew what was going on. They're gonna come there and meet. I think everyone understands the complaints. Everyone understands that, like, one of the towns, we have a long-term plan. This was nowhere in our long-term plan. We didn't know that you were going to need these millions of dollars. And I think that applies to a couple of our towns, like, new building failed over, I passed over, right? But now you're going to do another building, right? That's town order. The flip side is, take a walk through Whittier. And just see what you think. It's, you do a new penny and, and I, I, like, one of the things I don't know is if you decide to go the shiny penny route or if it ends up being a shiny penny route, it's likely as well. I don't know if that has to happen within a certain timeframe or if you just do that over 20 years. And that is 300 million, that 300 million is now or is 300 million, 600 million? There's no way to know. But as I said, or as I motioned, we'll see how it goes. January, it's with a important thing, January 23rd, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM is the vote. Your towns will have an individual meeting, a belt building project. None of the groups that are on our project are part of that. But, okay, very curious to see how this all plays out. That's all I have about that. If you have questions, I, I was, if you go, I think on the Whittier website, there's a link where you can go to all different presentations and watch stuff, but.
When, do you have to remember, I think it was in the article, do you have to remember the dates of the local presentations or when those meetings are? I know that they.
Let me see.
I've heard to be able to look them up, but there'll be some local.
So that 11:07 meeting, I think there's actually one on the 6th, one on the 8th, I believe, for us locally, just the week before. I don't think I have it here.
Saturday, November 18th for Berman. Wednesday, November 8th for Maryland. Wednesday, December 6th for Wisconsin.
Can I get that?
Different times.
Yep.
It's in, it's in the article.
Yeah.
Get it up on the reporting's article.
Yeah, but absolutely worth going through and looking at. I've seen.
There's a project website too, Whittier Tech, Building the Future of Whittier. That probably has all this information in it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Same in Witten's?
Small Bush Station. Second.
Almost a favor. Return.